Item three is comprehensive fee scheduling.
What's happening?
The way it's falling.
Oh.
The way it's falling?
Yeah. Oh, no.
Uh-oh.
Which could be a lot of...
We're back in there. We're good. Can we have public works to fix that, please? Okay. Wow. Okay, the next one is... That was item three approvals with a comprehensive fee schedule for the consumer price index update effective January first, the year 2020. Item four is sales tax updates for third quarter 2019, July through September 2019. Item five is approval of the minimum during live contact. Item six is adopt resolution number thirty-nine fifty, revising the police pay scale with the revised hard copy. Item seven is adopt resolution number thirty-nine fifty-one, proven police technician one eleven. Description. Item eight is adopt resolution number thirty-nine fifty-two, establishing a CPLOA non-score and pay scale. Item nine is direct city manager decree and distributed quarterly city news matter. Is there any item that you would like to further discuss?
What can I pull six?
Number six? All right. Any others? Okay. Number six? Your question? Or comments?
Yeah, so that cut out. I was to the public and quite before seeing it. And now you're coming down with this, looking at it as kind of crappy for the officers to have seen that and be looking at cases thinking about it. So they're wanting to be getting what we talked about. Two, now all of a sudden they were not saying correct. And they're not getting what it was supposed to do.
So that what was posted on the agenda, is that what was talked about? I don't know how the file became corrupted. And we're gonna have to look into that because that's not how it was saved to be attached. So luckily, we know this is track things and we're gonna have to look at that. But what was discussed was a two percent increase effective February seventeenth, which was the first page of the attachment, but then there were additional pages included. The documents that were attached were not actual approvable documents per CalPERS because they were missing all of the dates on heading. So I honestly don't know how that got there. And actually, Mary Jones caught it and emailed me asking questions about it. So the hard copy that you have in front of you is basically the first page of that document, which is what was discussed and agreed upon by council and provided to the association.
Okay, any other questions or thoughts on that issue?
They just gave you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I just to clarify. So because on this, sorry, Mary Jones. Uh, so is the July, the one here that was attached that says July, not twenty nineteen? Was that accurate?
No.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure.
So it is the one that says effective February seventeenth, twenty twenty.
Okay, so that's the first one.
And that's the only one.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve this consent?
Also, we'd like to show...
Do we have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion, a second? Can I go first, please?
Mayor Proton Ramsey?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Ackerson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stoltz?
Uh, yeah, aye.
And Mayor Rander?
Right over there. Okay, with item, those are the items number six, which is audience presentation discussion potential action. We have none. So now, I see that Give Me Love is here. So we would like to have a Give Me Love to give their annual report. Hi, how are you?
Hi, Derek. Mr. Mayor, move to the council. We're kind of running to get there, so we're late.
Catch your breath?
Yeah, all right. So July first, twenty nineteen, Give Me Love took over the animal shelter in Colinga. And we wanted to get here sooner to report to you guys a little bit of what we've got going on. Eight months later, here we are. We want to give you guys quarterly reports as we go, but we wanted to kind of catch up today since we've been busy and we have neglected to do so. So we would just like to start by saying that we appreciated the fact that you guys believed in us enough to give us an opportunity to come in. We certainly feel like we have put a big dent in a problem that is in Colinga and a problem that still exists in Colinga that we're still working on, which is stray animals. I'd like to refer to our first month in July of twenty nineteen, where we had a total of forty-six dogs come through the shelter, a total of twenty-nine cats, returned to owner, five dogs. We rescued twenty-four dogs and twenty-five cats that month. We thought that we were doing pretty amazing. And as we went, we, that month, we got two animals in that were, that were very sick and didn't make it. So that, that kind of went against what our whole idea of taking over an animal shelter was because we don't want to, we don't want to euthanize animals. We don't want to put animals down. So that brought us into a, into a tricky situation as we started dealing with the community and getting help from a lot of people. Mr. Ackerson, Mrs. Stoltz, a lot of people really paying attention to what we're doing and thanking us and helping us as we were going along. We realized that a lot of the phone calls that we were getting with stray animals, we were strictly running on volunteer basis, so we couldn't actually go out and, and address every single call as they came in. And they started becoming overwhelming, so the number of calls. So we, we kind of got together and we got more volunteers involved and we got more people involved. And as we started going, we started noticing that phone calls were decreasing as we got into September with twenty-seven dogs, twenty cats, two dogs returned to owners, four dogs rescued or adopted. And then we started doing things for the community that we thought would help the community by educating people on spay and neuter. So we started taking our own vehicle and we started inviting the public to bring their animals down. And we were getting vouchers through grants with local veterinary clinics where, where the community could actually do it for ten dollars or twenty dollars or fifteen dollars, whatever that grant was for that month. And it really paid dividends because we really started to see a big increase in, in the number of people who were, were turning up and making the phone calls to come out and, and have their animals spayed and neutered, which, which was our whole goal whenever we started. Since then, we've had the residents of just Colinga, we, we paid Snipus. They actually went solid out, but they were there just for us, just for Colinga residents. And we had twenty-five animals set up just for Colinga residents that day. And since then, we have used our transportation for the residents and we have spayed or neutered one hundred and forty-seven cats. And we got fifteen more coming in this Monday. So it's a continual thing that we're doing for the community and I think everybody is on board and is excited about it. I just want to throw some numbers at you again. In November, it's staying pretty consistent, twenty dogs, twenty cats, three dogs returned to owners, none euthanized. Also, go back to September, none euthanized. I'm sorry, jumping over. August, thirty-one dogs, forty cats, two dogs, two cats returned to owners, thirteen dogs rescued and sixteen cats rescued, none euthanized. Same thing in September, I just gave you those numbers. October, pretty much the same thing, twenty-four, twenty-seven, eight dogs returned to owners, none euthanized, four dogs adopted out. November, same, same numbers, twenty-four, thirty-two, three dogs returned to owner, one cat rescued, none euthanized. December, we had fifteen dogs, twenty-nine cats, none returned to owner, five dogs rescued, three cats rescued, none euthanized. Again, you can see as we're, as we're going, the numbers are staying pretty consistent, but the animals have a chance of survivability. My wife, my daughter Alexis, are continually volunteering their time staying on the phone with rescues throughout California. So it's really paying dividends for us. January, thirty-three dogs, thirty-three cats, four dogs returned to owner, sixteen dogs rescued, eleven cats rescued, zero euthanized. February, we started out twenty-six dogs, forty-four cats, two dogs returned to owners, zero euthanized. And we adopted out fifteen cats. Overall, I think we have a good program going. I think we have a solid program going. I think the community is on board. We still get a lot of phone calls with people who are upset and angry because they, they still see a dog that may be running around. One of our goals is not to euthanize the animals. If we, if we go to an area and our, the shelter is, of course, you guys know the shelter is very small. So we're ninety percent of the time, we're at full capacity. So if we come across those dogs or those cats, we do everything we can to collect them and find a place for them to be. But if we see a dog that's running around, it's being fed, it's not injured, it's not hurt, I'd rather that dog stay there a couple of days. We get to it whenever we get something out so that we can help that dog survive. So this has brought us to a place where I never thought that Give Me Love would be. As president of the board and co-founder of Give Me Love, it doesn't even belong to us anymore. It belongs to the community and it belongs to the state. We're becoming recognized all over the place. We've gone to functions over the last three or four months where people have come up and recognized us as the owners of Give Me Love Animal Shelter in Colinga. So there's a good vibe, I guess, for lack of better words. There's a really good vibe with Give Me Love Animal Shelter and the City of Colinga. That's, that's huge to us and something that we want to keep, keep going and instilling into people that there's a way to do this. We are talking with local businesses. This is something that I want to bring back to the city eventually, but we are very much involved with trap neuter and release programs. We have a local business, one of the main businesses in town, cleaning community, thrift shop that we're talking to that we hope is on board. We're in communication with them about a trap program, the surrounding area. Ace Hardware, the, the car wash is a haven for a lot of drop-offs for cats and there's a big problem there. Give Me Love Animal Shelter has taken, it's not here, forty?
Forty-two.
Forty-two kittens over the last couple of months from that area. So we're housing them at our Monterey County facility until they get old enough and hopefully things that is really getting us recognition throughout California is the fact that we have established a contract with Petsmart. So we are now in San Luis Obispo, Bakersfield, and Hamford Petsmart. So when you go into those, you see their cats that are up for adoption, you're gonna see a Give Me Love from the City of Colinga card that's on front of their, their panel. So something I'm really proud of. I had nothing to do with it. I spearheaded that, took care of it. We also, something that I spearheaded. We're also in negotiations with Avonale State Prison to populate their animal training program. They're very interested in having ten dogs at all times for professional training for a number of different reasons. They have also donated some buildings that hopefully will be housing bigger dogs and we can take in more animals with, so that's something else in the works. So... Sorry. So overall, basically, I, I gave you guys month by month and I was excited about that because there's no euthanasia involved in ninety-five percent of those months. But overall, the total dogs that we've rescued just within the city limits is eighty-five dogs. Total cats rescued was sixty-nine. Total returned to owner was eighteen dogs and two cats. Total dogs adopted out, and this is just within the city, not even counting the broader area that we do, but total adopted out within the city was nine dogs and thirty-one cats, twenty-three Petsmart cats, eight in-house, I'm not sure what that means. So total dogs through the facility since we opened, two hundred and fifteen, total cats, two hundred and thirty-eight. So we're proud of those numbers. We want to see them get smaller and smaller to where we have control and population control within the city limits of Colinga. And we, we make every, every citizen happy and proud of what we're doing and can take the problem that has existed for a long, long time. And I think within the eight short months that we've been involved, I think we put a heavy dent in it. And we just kind of keep working at educating the community. We have, we've gone to the elementary schools and we've done presentations there. So we also believe that it starts with the kids. You know, they get the, they get the pamphlets we hand out and the education. They take it home and share it and it becomes a, a bigger picture. So that's pretty much all I have for you.
That is an incredible report. You've done a lot.
Thank you.
I see you do that a lot. So you have a volunteer program?
Yes, we do.
And you have a volunteer program that walks dogs in my career?
I'm sorry?
You have a volunteer program that they walk some of the dogs?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Could you elaborate on that? Because I think that's pretty darn neat.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have a place to visit on a regular basis?
So, so we wouldn't function without our volunteers. In the beginning, we had some wonderful volunteers and people moved on and things changed. And we thought for a minute we were in trouble, but people stood, stood up and came in and volunteered. We have wonderful volunteers that come and clean and feed and walk the dogs on a Tuesday, Wednesday?
Monday, Wednesdays they walk the dogs.
Monday, Wednesday. So that's a big deal for us. So especially the packed house that we had, you know, these guys were coming down and it's, it's a job because we have some big dogs that, you know, I'm a pretty big guy to drag me around all over the place. So it's, it's pretty neat to see the community come out and...
Right. The reason I brought that up is because I have my business on Elm Street and I watch these guys walk by with dogs. And then by the corner, I said, pretty soon he says, didn't they just have a different dog while they're going? Yeah? Anyway, so I explained it to them, anyway.
Yeah, no, they're doing a wonderful job. And without that, you know, I, I'm not sure what we would do. So we're, we're definitely humbled by everybody that comes out and volunteers and has limited hands. And we need more.
Okay, that was my next question. We need more.
Yeah, we definitely need more. You can never have too many. We need a lot of weekend help. My wife and I are there pretty much seven days a week. My daughter's there Monday through Friday. The actual hours of the, of the animal shelter is one to four, one PM to four PM, Monday through Friday. And that's if my, my daughter Alexis runs it, one to four, and we're usually there after four for a couple of hours. A lot of people get their business taken care of then. But that's if she's not just going nuts with calls because she's definitely hitting the van and going out and picking up and, and delivering the rescues and so on and so forth. So we have, we've just been throughout California in the last few months, seen some places I never thought I'd see, but some really good people out there who've helped us out tremendously.
That's awesome. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to make a comment. So I saw your post on Facebook about Petsmart. So I want to congratulate you because other rescues that I know that have part of Petsmart do really well a day or two when the cats are adopted. So I hope you have like a huge dent for you.
Yeah, and it has, so I, I read the number, but we just...
Thirty-one cats in a month and a half.
Yeah, month and a half, thirty-one cats have been adopted, so... So these are all Colinga cats, which is a, which is a big deal, so...
Good job.
Well, I would just like to say that I'm very pleased and I know this council is very pleased that you guys stepped up and volunteered your time and drew a contract with the City of Colinga. You are doing a great job for us and we very, very much appreciate it.
That means...
And I know that you have lots of room for improvement and you're very glad.
Yeah.
And you guys are gonna do it, I know you are.
Yeah, absolutely. And we're gonna continue working our regular jobs.
Well, yeah, yeah, exactly.
No, thank you guys for your time. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Before you leave, sorry. So we have two citizens who could not attend the meeting tonight, so they emailed in their questions and/or comments.
Okay.
And one of them has a question for you. The other one's more directed at the council, but it's about animal control.
Okay.
So I'll do the one that's a question for you. It was submitted by Angie Alvarez. And she says, "We bought a house that was overrun by cats. If we can catch them, do you have room for them? Or maybe no, an inexpensive place to fix them? The lady that used to live in the house has been taking food to them and we're trying to stop her."
Okay, so...
I spoke to the lady personally on the issue and that they are feral cats.
Okay.
And the shelter is not able to take in feral cats. We do not have the appropriate cages for a feral cat. What we have, my husband pulled one out one day, which was a feral cat. It literally tore him up. I have scars on my arms from the feral cats that we've had to deal with and you cannot move the feral cats. No one wants a feral cat. And we did adopt some out to ranch owners, a few, but we've had no more luck since that one batch left. So we are not taking in feral cats. We are offering the TNR program, which we also told them about, that, you know, they can have them fixed and then they're brought back to that area. They're not moved somewhere else, they're brought back to that area. The only problem with that is at this point, there are, there's no grant and no money for that, so that's on the citizens to have to do, pay for.
You know, it's...
We've reached out and the cheapest you can have a female then is about forty dollars if not pregnant or in heat. So most people are not willing to do that. Some are, some aren't. So we're hoping to be able to reach out and find grants that can cover that or most of the expense. We used Cat House. They had a grant and that's how most people were having them done for the ten dollars. But yes, I spoke to you.
Thank you.
And to follow up with that, we are going to come back to council with, in the future, with a plan and an idea that we would like to present, which is the TNR program, which City of Isaias is a huge advocate for a TNR program. And we're hoping that we can do it and have a person from Feral Cat Coalition in Isaias come and actually give you some literature and some education on how it really controls the population of cats. So something in the future.
Feral cats is really a...
Big problem.
Where just like, you know, I used to live some time ago, we captured twenty-six feral cats and the animal control person that used to be employed here are chewing pretty hard.
I know.
And you say, and Terry, they absolutely do.
And, and just for your guys' information, feral cats now, there's, there's really no place to take them or anything to do with them. You know, most states are now becoming no kill states and most vets now refuse to euthanize any animal that is healthy, regardless if it's feral or not. We called fifteen vets, just this was info, info to give to the thrift shop. We called fifteen vets and one was willing to euthanize a feral healthy cat, but it was two hundred dollars per cat and they would not do a whole colony. They might do one or two, but they were not going to put down a whole colony of cats. So that's the issue is there's just no place for these animals to go. So everyone can sit back and just watch them keep producing or you can step up and you just have to do what you have to do on your property. And mainly, the only thing is, is fixing them and just letting them go. But we have checked into all kinds of options for the cats and they're, it's just not there. It's just not there.
You have that at this, right?
Yes. And then the other one is directed towards the council. And so this was submitted by Donna Stevenson. And it says, "Dear city council members, I would like to know if you can help solve the out of control animal issue that we have in this town. It's obvious that Give Me Love Shelter is not working. I called them about a month ago, but some stray cats around my house, about some stray cats around my house, and they informed me that I would need to get them gathered up myself and they would then call me when they had room. Imagine my surprise in addition when they informed me it'd be thirty-five dollars per animal. They're not even mine. Well, no worries, they will, they have not even called me back yet. I would really like to know what you're going to do about this awful situation. This really is awful. Thank you for your time, Donna Stevenson."
Well, I think you just heard the report is to apply something that transpired that probably were feral cats. Correct? Yes, Mary, yes, a comment?
It's my neighbor.
Oh, it's your neighbor?
Yeah. Can I...
Let's go and get them, Warren.
There was a, there was a person who lived about four houses down and they fed every cat, always. And they called them their cats, but they, they won't. But they're not totally feral cats. They're like, they're humanized, but they're not inbodies. They moved. The same thing with the post office cats. The people move away, they think they're being nice and they're just creating problems. So I, I think we, all of us, I mean, with the newspaper, I know, too, educate people. You're not helping animals. Sooner or later, you're going to die or get sick and those animals will have nowhere and no one. And I, I've talked with her a lot because she's from Arkansas or somewhere where it seems different. Different universe.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mary.
No, and just, just in closing, you know, we do return every phone call that we receive. It might be, it might be a day later or a couple of hours later, but we do return every phone call. And I wish that we could help everybody. I wish we could go pick up every twenty-six cats at every house that everybody calls for. It's, it's, it's a work in progress. It's going to be a slow work in progress. The TNR program is something that will significantly help a lot. It's hard to, it's hard to grasp TNR, trap, neuter, release because everybody says, just bring it back to the same place, you got the same problem. That's really not the case, but I don't have the material to give you guys right now. I know some people know about it. And it's really a great, great program. Hopefully, we can get it going here and within, within a one-year period, the City of Isaias, I think the numbers were in two hundred and eighteen cat colony around Mooney Grove Park. And within a year, they're down to eighteen cats with the TNR program. So it, it really does help a lot, so if there's nothing else, so...
I read in the course of the feral, female feral cats life, they will produce two hundred kittens.
Yeah, yeah, there's some, there's some...
Or more.
Or more.
There's some numbers that are just mind boggling.
And it's not the feeding the ferals that's the problem, it's the not fixing the ferals.
Thank you, exactly.
That's the problem.
That is exactly the problem.
Yeah.
Well, I want to say again, they're doing a great job and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item, here it is. Audience presentation discussion interaction item, there is none. So we will go to announcements, see mayor's announcements?
I have none.
Councilmembers and announcements? Mayor's announcements, I have one at this time? Oh, there you have one. Somebody's got to keep me in check here. Okay, this reads, Area Community Health Center now open. Walk-ins welcome. It's open Mondays through Friday from eight AM to five PM. It's a family practice in a, except Menadown, they have one ninety-one East Polk Street, next to Little Caesar's Pizza, behind Walgreens. So if there is a health point there for any one items, anyway, the number is nine three five, twenty-one hundred. So if you need that service, it's there. Any future agenda items?
I have one. Is it possible for the city and council to get an update on the status of the hospital from the hospital board or Dr. Singh? Because I was hearing March, April, and I'm here in August and I have citizens asking and it seems like nobody really is sure.
We can reach out to them and ask if they would come give an update. The prison count requires them to, but we can reach out and see.
The last official answer they gave was August.
That's interesting you should say that because I've had multiple requests for the information on that last week and a half. Any other future agenda items? Seeing none, we're going to go into closed session. We have one item. Real property negotiations, government code section five four nine five six point eight. Conference with real property negotiator, property APN number zero seven one zero eight four dash two four. Formally, zero seven one, the S two, four zero one, number two, three, twenty-one eight nine six. Located in the city of Colinga on the southwest corner of Elm Avenue and Cherry Lane. The city negotiators bar, the city manager, Melissa Trejo, and city attorney, Mario Zamora. Negotiating parties, Salyard American Incorporated, and their negotiation price and terms of payment. Thank you for your attendance. This meeting is over. Thank you for your attendance. This will be the summary of our...
Question?
What?
Hey.
How you doing?
Good.
How's it going, y'all? Do you think you could buy a present? I've been here. I've been here for... I've been here listening. You have a little attitude, but when they have time to...
So, they want to...
They would pull it out.
I've been here. I've been here for...
Like, where is...
Did he scare you? I was like, "What are we should do?"
I'm just saying. Oh, the agenda? Oh, okay.
Only not versed at each one.
No.
And you can look at it. Turn it out. Ask, I didn't see it all.
Which one?
In the hallway. In the hallway.
Oh, God.
Take a look at it and let me down and then...
Oh, my God. Calamity.
Did you even know that?
I didn't even know that.
Who's paying for your... Girl?
Hey, I'm... Oh, my Easter egg. Except for the thing that is formerly...
I see.
Yeah.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
What's the process?
I think you're a leisure.
There's a beautiful...
And we're...
Yeah. That was... Says that a lot.
I'll tell you.
Well, I have other contracts.
You know, I don't know. Basically, I don't really know.
No, not recently. I'm taking a break.
You got the camera rest.
I'm breaking here.
We don't want to get burnt out.
I'm just doing it.
That's the next one.
All dogs. So, I've never had any trouble.
My... Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.